Call the committee to order six thirty. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call. Cray here.
Cум이 here.
Snyder here.
Cummins here.
Scott here. Your new partner. The record show we have full board present. I have in front of me verification of proper meeting notices being posted. Brings us right into the agenda. I'm aware of some additions here to the agenda. Under new business, action item E on staff positions. We're adding two names there. It is a Mariah Wook, second grade teacher, and Quinn Killer Lane, an IT position. They're both presented for employment for 2023, 2024. Are there any other additions, corrections?
Matt, we're gonna, we're gonna hold off on approving Rebecca Walter tonight, too.
Okay.
That was one of the instructional aids being presented, so she'll just come on.
Gotcha. Okay. We'll also note that when we take action there, as part of the motion, is there any other? Changed the agenda?
There's none.
Then I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Okay. Got a motion by Ms. Swami to approve the agenda with the known additions and one subtraction. Is there a second?
Coming, so second.
Okay, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented. Aye. Pose. Motion carries on a seven vote. Takes us to the action of the minutes from the regular meeting on Wednesday, July 12th, in the open session. Any noted changes here? Corrections, additions on the minutes from July 12th? I will move for approval.
Cummins, a second.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Cray, a second by Ms. Cummings to approve as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
Okay. So motion will carry on a six oh one vote. Brings us to the minutes from the policy committee meeting on Monday, July 31st. Any noted changes there, policy numbers? None.
I'd move to approve those minutes.
Okay. Got a motion by Ms. Swami to approve.
I will second.
Second by Mr. Cray. All those in favor of approving the policy minutes? Policy committee, meeting minutes from July 31st.
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries on a seven oh votes vote. Brings us down to presentations to the board. So first up, we have Mr. Scott Brown from Neola, here to give a brief presentation. He said it would only take an hour or two. But we'll turn the floor over to Mr. Brown to give us a little background on Neola. And I would also then, before we move on from Mr. Brown, so we can allow him to leave the meeting. If members have, board members have any questions regarding either the first reading of policies presented tonight or the second reading policies, be a great time to ask Mr. Brown any questions. So without further ado, Scott, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's great to be here with, here with all of you. My name is Scott Brown. I work with Neola. It's a company that provides policies to the school districts. But my experience before this, before I retired from being a superintendent, I was district administrator in McFarland for 13 years. And I was a business manager there for 12 years. And that was, I also was involved with your superintendent's superintendent training program. I ran that program in Edwood for about three or four years and taught in it for, I think, 25 years. So I feel a lot of connection here. I do have, I just, I found it, Brian's summative. You know, at the end of a class, you have like a summative presentation that I could bring it up on the screen and you could then just share what you learned in my class. Okay, all right, pass on that. Just sort of quickly, a lot of people want to know what Neola means. It means north, it did mean northeast Ohio Learning Associates. You're all familiar with what CISA's are in Wisconsin. That's what, that's what they had in Ohio. Superintendent who was retiring from Ohio bought this product they had to try to do cooperative policy development. He thought it was a really good idea and then created a business from it that's now in six or seven states. So that's just a little bit about how the title comes from. Somebody wants to know that. Let's see here, there we go. So cooperative policy development, so our policies tend to come from all our clients and from attorneys and from the 1,600 school districts that we represent. We create model policies with lots of choices that are all legally compliant, that districts can choose and sort of design a model that fits their district the best. That won't be as evident in the bylaws that you're doing because a lot of those are preset or even maybe even the 9000s, which will be coming to you for a reading, too. But later on, when you get into the 2000s, which is all the instructional area, or the 5000s, the policies really will become a lot more intense for the committee to review and for you to review as well. We've been 30 years in Wisconsin. We have nine retired superintendents that work with districts. I, I started with Neola, I think it's, I'm starting my sixth year. I started with 13 districts sort of spread out all the way across the southern part of the state. And if I would have kept all my districts and would have, haven't added new associates, I personally have added and drafted with about 60 districts now. So if you have an idea of how much Neola has continued to grow. Right now, we have around 325 districts in the state out of 425 that use our services. And the more we get, the better it gets because it can be as simple as a correction that was suggested just in the meeting I was at with your board president. And that suggestion will be forwarded on, actually on Friday of this week. And then it'll be considered as a part of the update package that comes out in November. We won't give them any real credit on a, on a policy. It won't be like a important, "thank you Waterloo" or anything like that, but, but a lot of the changes we get are from our clients' experiences. The other cool part as a businessman, I hear about Neola. I joined Neola, I heard about it from someone, it made a lot of sense. In McFarland, we were doing policy meetings with our administrative staff on Wednesday mornings every other week. And then we would get these sort of model policies, just samples from other districts from WSB. We'd turn around, you know, craft our own from them or any other thoughts we have. We'd ship it off to our school attorney. He would make notes on it, give it back to us. And then we would finally get it to the point where we were ready to present it to the policy committee. Neola really shortcuts a lot of that, that labor. In McFarland, I think when I was going into Neola, I gave a presentation to our board on why I thought it was really sound financially. We had been spending about 20, depending on the year, 20 to 25,000 for the services we were trying to get, put policies in place. This was some time ago. And we also, you know, our administrators were spending a lot of time doing this policy work and preparing for the board. It's their role, but obviously it's their job to try to help bring it forward if that's the way, the way you're doing it. So we had a lot more production, I think that was more student and community centered as we got away from spending those mornings every other Wednesday. And then once you finish drafting with Neola, that, that's what you're doing right now. That's kind of the expensive part. Neola, when I first signed up, which would be almost, I don't know, I guess it would be 18 or so years ago, the annual fee to be a part of Neola was $2,600. And I think now it's 32 and it might go to 34. So they really have kept those fees down when you consider the length, you know, of time. And I think part of it is they've modernized everything to save themselves a lot of money in how they do it. The other thing is I would just say they're not an overly profit-driven, you know, company. They're seem to be, you know, started by a superintendent. He wants to see it as many districts as possible. Everybody in Neola pays the same price. So whether it's Reek School District at K8 that I have that has 80 students, you know, or if it's a large school district like Onalaska or Middleton, it's pretty much the same. When we do a district like Madison, we're doing Madison right now, that, that requires more of a special contract. And also a pheromone of et cetera of this data for Madison, so. So you are part of the, you are a part of the program. And right now, you're drafting, it's awesome, you've done great work, you're moving along well. Your goal is to get all this work done through the committee, approved by you for a first and second reading, and then one vote that will adopt everything and will say your old policies are no longer active. Your goal was to do it in, you know, six months to a year. And we work, just so you know, we work with some, some of the key school law firms. We work with René Lewis and Lacy, Emerson Davis. We also work with Boardman and Clark, just because they have a lot of districts. So most of our policies are run by them as well. Now, the one thing I just thought I'd share today, this is, this will be the end of my presentation and I can ask questions. The, the really cool part of Neola is after you get done with this work, you get annual updates that update every policy in your entire policy book twice a year. So not anymore, we're going to cover section 1,000 or 100 or 300 or 400. And the logic behind that is that policies and laws and experience of the schools are changing across all the policy categories, you know, multiple times throughout the year. So we do two updates. If there's something like COVID going on, I think we did five special updates dealing with all the things you dealt with, COVID masks, virtual meetings, virtual students, virtual teachers, a lot of, you know, changes we put in there in particular. So what, what you're, what you have now, I'm not going to talk about all this just because it's not worthy of your time right now. But you do get two updates per year. And the reason it's important for the committee and for the board to try to get this done in a tighter timeline is because those updates will happen while you're drafting. And there's no way to necessarily update a policy that, sort of, as you're moving through the process. If you haven't done a section, we'll update that section. But once the section's gone through, we want to wait till everything is done before we update it. What I thought would be kind of interesting for you to see, and I'll close with this. So tomorrow, I'm in Wannawak for their update meeting. And this is what Neola put together on Board Docs, and I think you'll, you think are pretty, is pretty cool. First, I'll just show you quickly here. This is your, your website, your Board Docs website. This is where we're keeping the clean drafts that, that selections have been made. And this is the area where the administration, myself, and the policy committee is working, looking at the different recommendations along the way. Everything is stored and archived, even though we clean them up, we keep a record of what was originally, originally turned in. We go over to Wannawak here. You can see this is their active policy manual. So this is what your policy manual will look like when you're done. It's searchable, which is awesome for people to look for things. I had somebody today write me an email and then they wrote back and said, "Oh, I forgot to search. Now I found the policy." So the search is a very, a very useful thing. But what I wanted to show you is, so Wannawak tomorrow will be doing update 32.2. So Neola, through technology, is able to push out their updates to all their clients digitally. And then I can go to this update right here. This is the one I'm covering with them tomorrow. Click on it and it, it gives the overview, a lot of things that are included in the update. It lists the policies and why they've been changed. And all that's a part of every update, actually a printable sheet that you can share with the board when the update comes. But I think kind of the, the neat part of it, the technology part of it, that you're going to find really useful and time-saving is, this is a list of all the policies. I can hit, all cop, copy all policies into drafts. And what I'm copying in are all the updated templates, all the changes that we're making to our templates. Because we can't, every, every district, some districts put in custom language into our language. Everybody, you know, does things different when they draft. But what we can do is I can copy all policies to draft. I can put it in their draft area, their policy manual. And then it brings it over to the draft area. It lets me know they've been copied. And if I go to the draft area now in Wannawak, in their policy manual, it has brought over a copy of every policy that's going to be updated, a copy of their original policy. And it's brought over a copy of the updates. So like, we just look at one, and, and other things in the updates. They always have an overview and legal alerts. And this one has a document that reminds people of all the required staff trainings. Edgar checklist is a financial update. But if we go to like electoral process, Neola in this update is recommending some changes just to make it more clear about the process for declaration of candidacy. And they're, they're also, they also want us to make sure that no districts have, have added nomination papers when they drafted because you can add it in, but then you have to do it. But you aren't required by law unless you have like a part of Madison, a Class One city. And so some districts may have made a mistake drafting. And then when a board member doesn't know where they have the nomination papers, they need to get pulled off the ballot. So it's sort of a double check as well as rewriting this one. We'll take these changes to what you all have approved in your, in your 141-1. We'll copy over the ones that apply. And then that will be presented to the policy committee by Brian, perhaps with me as well, maybe initially. And we'll go over the updates, the reason for the changes, the policy committee will be able to choose. Comes before the board, the board then votes on updating the policies. One quick email to Neola, they grab them and they make all your policies active with a new date. Retire all your old policies and keep track of it all. And to me, the value in that, in time savings and, you know, finding a way to serve so many districts without having them all to do all this, this legal work or the somewhat time-consuming administrative, like assistant work is just something that I think you'll appreciate and others will appreciate. The number one thing I see is that when, when superintendents change districts, they come from a Neola district, the first thing they do is try to get Neola in. And that's really the way Neola basically grows off word of mouth. I don't, I don't really make any effort to advertise at all. So I'm excited you're part of the program. You're an awesome district to add. And there'll probably be a few others in your area adding here down the road. A couple that just inquired in the last month and then one that acquired two days ago. So in a lot of states, the states where Neola has been the longest, they'll have 95% of the districts. And they seem to keep them. You have to have a good product to keep them, right? If you ever leave Neola, the policies are yours to keep. If you continue to use Neola language, you have to keep the copyright on there. But it's not like if you left Neola, everything would just disappear. These are your policies that you own and, and have as a district. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions, board member, general questions regarding Neola? Any policy specific questions on either second reading policies tonight or the first reading policies? Scott, I would ask a question. And you briefly mentioned it. As we get into the meatier sections of policy, in your experience, do full boards attend those committee meetings to hash that out or?
I think, what I watch committees do is if they have, I mean, just to give you a couple examples, if the weapons policy, I generally recommend the full board decide because there's some choices you can make about your parking lot and having case, and, and districts vary depending on the culture of the district. So there'll be policies that the committee may want to say, "We aren't going to make the choice to recommend it. We're going to bring it to the full board." But generally, the committee kind of takes the first, you know, the first, the preparation for it, it's really kind of their, I would say, their role, so.
Anything else? No. Well, you're off. Have a easy day.
Thank you. I never want to leave a school board without saying, "Thank you for what you do." So I mean, I've been working with school boards for years and it's, I know a lot of it is a labor of, you know, care and passion. Thank you for being willing to be public servants. And thanks for taking care of Brian, he's awesome.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
Thanks for making the trip over. So as Scott's packing up there, we will move to Ms. Zeeman to discuss standard-based grading and the presentation that she has put together. So whenever you're ready, you have the floor, Christine. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Scott.
All right. Tonight, I have a general presentation for you about standard-based grading. Since last board meeting, I didn't receive any additional questions. I did share out some of the information that was requested from last time with you and I hope that you all got that and were able to look through that because that will help with your understanding of what process we're doing here. So this is just a general presentation. Please feel free to ask questions along the way. I think it's really important that we do some learning around standard-based grading and the work that the teachers have done so far. So I'm going to see if my little quick thing works. It might not. Okay. So when we are talking about standard-based grading, this is the academic definition. So it's clearly stating what students are expected to know and be able to do and then providing students with feedback on their progress toward mastery of that skill. So in a nutshell, standard-based grading is really focused on student learning. And that is the work that we've been doing for the past year and a half. And that is one of the foundational reasons why we are talking about standard-based learning is because we really need to talk about how students are learning those standards and what we're doing if they're not and what we're doing if they already know the material and how to extend that learning. So last month, you approved and declared the educational standards that the school district of Waterloo is using. And these standards are the foundations of all of our curriculum pre-K 12. And I wanted to share with you also that we are basing our work off of the school board policy that I shared last month as well. And the big pieces in here is that our grading systems in our policy promote a process of continuous evaluation of student performance, inform the students and his or her parents or guardians of the student's progress and relationship to establish learner expectations based on state standards and provide a basis for bringing about change in student performance if such change is deemed necessary. So the specific grading systems you allow to be developed for various grade levels by the building principal, and that is what we have based our work from. So when we talk about the purpose of grading, we want to make sure that we are separating academic performance from work habits and behavior in order to provide students, parents, and teachers a more accurate view of a student's progress in meeting the rigor of the standards. So we want to make sure that the grades that we are communicating out to parents and students are about their proficiency, not necessarily termed compensation. So we want to make sure that students are being accurate in how they are showing their proficiency of the standard. We want to make sure that our rubrics are clear. And we want to make sure that our teachers are really understanding what it is that they are grading. So here is a graphic that we have shared with parents. And I shared it with you last year as well. And this shows how standard-based grading functions. So it communicates how students are performing on essential standards that are identified within the Wisconsin academic standards. So a student would learn a new skill, practice the skill, make mistakes, analyze and fix mistakes. They might have a formative assessment on the skill. They might make more mistakes, have to have some more instruction, ask for help, analyze fixed mistakes, practice the skill, re-quiz on the skill. They might have to do that cycle all over again, or they might demonstrate mastery. So when we talk about this with staff and students, I like to use the driver's license test as an example. So I don't know about all of you, but I failed the first time that I took my driver's test when I was 16. I had to take it again after I practiced some more. And when I passed the second time, I didn't get 50% of the driver's license. So in a traditional grading system, I would have gotten 50% of the driver's license because I didn't pass it the first time. But in standard-based grading, we give students credit for the learning that they have occurred over a period of time, it's not an average. So part of that learning cycle, the making mistakes, getting more feedback, getting more instruction, and then demonstrating mastery, they're able to get all the credit that they deserve when they show mastery of the skill. Same thing with the ACT. Students retake the ACT, they get the highest score. They don't get an average of the scores. My daughter took the MCAT twice because she didn't like her first score. She gets credit for the highest score. So when we are looking about standard-based grading and the evidence of skill, we're using those real-world type applications to measure student progress. So last month, we had talked a little bit about why and why we are really focusing hard on the standards and proficiency levels. And Mr. Henning mentioned last month about the discrepancy that we sometimes see. So I've included in here some longitudinal data on ELA from 2018, 19, all the way up until 21, 22. We do have our current scores from last year, but I cannot share them with you yet because they are in marvo. So once they become public, I can share those out with you if you would like. If you would like math data, I can also get that for you, too. But if you look at our, okay. If you look at our scores, and this is the whole district. So anybody that has taken the forward exam in ELA in Waterloo School District in 2018, 19, 35% of our students were proficient or advanced in ELA. In 2020, 21, there was a year that was missed because COVID, so we did not take forward exam. We had 29.3% of all students proficient or advanced in ELA. And then 20, in 21, 22, we had 27.9% of students proficient and advanced in ELA. So when we see numbers like that, we know that we, as teachers, have got to focus really hard on our tier one or universal instruction. We should see, we would hope, about 80% of our students proficiency, you know, being proficient in what we are teaching them. So we had to dig in and we had to look at what those standards were, were saying. We had to pick them apart. We had to look at what the learning targets would be. And we had to look at the rigor of what the standards were asking and then reassess how we were teaching it so we could measure student learning. So when we talk with teachers, we ask these four questions. What do we want our students to know and be able to do? And those are our essential standards. How will we know if they know it? Those are the rubrics that teachers have created. What will we do if they do not know it? What kind of reteaching, retakes, small groups, extra help, intervention do we need to provide? And what will we do if they already know it? So what extension activities can we provide for those students that are already proficient and we want to extend their learning? So this is, oop, go back. This is more than just changing our report cards. This is deeply embedded work in how our teachers ensure the learning of all of our students. This is just another map to show you the academic work that has been proven to move students forward and that we hire teachers to do and administrators to lead. So last year, students at the intermediate and middle school identified their essential standards that answered that first question. They are sharing clarity on the standards. They work together in groups to develop rubrics based on their unpacking of the standards. They have developed common formative assessments. They've delivered instructional plans, and then they analyze that data. And those were the two main focuses for second semester of last year. As we move forward, we want to really dig into what those standards are telling us, where our deficiencies are, whether they are universal or global deficiencies, or if it is individual student-based. So we're gonna spend some time talking about small group or individual interventions as well as individual extensions. So we do have a lot of work to do, and it's a continual cycle. So even though we developed our rubrics last year, we still need to make sure that they're clear for students and parents and make changes if we get feedback that they are not clear. So one of the questions that we sent out to parents or one of the pieces of information is how do standard-based report cards improve teaching and learning? And we want to make sure that we know where the students are in their progress towards meeting the standards because that is crucial for our planning and carrying out of classroom instruction. So teachers need to teach to the needs of their students, and they need to know those discrete skills that students are lacking in order to help move them forward. So standard-based grading is designed to give teachers more information about the student's progress and meeting the level of proficiency required by each standard. And they need to share the standards with students and parents, helping them to better understand the learning that needs to take place and how we can help our students succeed. This is the timeline that we did. We're halfway through. So in terms three and four, rubrics were solidified, and we began a new grade mark category. And I will fully admit, we tried to fit standard-based grading into a traditional computerized system in Skyward, which was confusing for parents. So this summer, the progress reports within Skyward are being modified to change and reflect standard-based grading, so that will be more clear for parents and students. So when we are looking for evidence, we're looking at daily observations, quizzes, classwork, tests, projects. Students are given all the credit they deserve for showing understanding and application of the standards over time. And one of the biggest pieces of standard-based grading, aside from it based around student learning, is that it is not an average of a student's scores. In a traditional grading system, every 40 needs an 80 in order to get a 60. So even if a student didn't understand something at first, but towards the end of the term does understand, they get full credit for all of the learning that they're able to show. They don't have any not understanding averaged into their final score. Students will see identified or essential standards presented at the beginning of units. Learning targets are posted in rooms. Classroom syllabi will have them, rubrics and progress reports. Families can see the standards in classroom syllabus, course guides, and progress reports at any time if any parent or board member has questions about what the essential standards are or the rubrics that are written, welcome to ask, and I would be happy to ship that. So this is a sample grade book. So at the top, you will see ELA 5.1. In this example, that is one of the essential standards that was identified. Below that are different assignments that measure that standard, and then there are scores entered. So in there, like I said, the scores are based on performance. So that very first line item with the 1, 2, 3, 3, 4, 4, 4, that student would receive a 4 as a final grade. They would not have that 1 or 2 or the 3s averaged in because towards the end of the term, they have shown exemplary understanding of that standard. This is a sample rubric, and I shared all the rubrics that we have with you. The report card statement is at the top for eighth-grade ELA, cite textual evidence. The essential standard is listed. The I can statements are also what we term our learning targets. So those are what students will be able to do. And then the definitions of the scores are below. So a lot of our teachers are starting to either attach these rubrics to tests or assignments, or they are embedding them in the top of tests or assignments and giving the students immediate feedback on where they are for that standard. Here is a sample progress report. I wasn't able to print out one from Skyward that we are working on, but if you look under the math parts there, and I know it's really tiny, but there's different standards listed under there, and the student would receive a score for each standard. Now, our staff have decided that they would like to get an overall score for a content area as well. So our progress report would have math and a score, and then each individual standard with a score. So parents are gonna be able to see if their student is doing really well in this one standard and not so well in the other standards. Here is an example of our definitions that I've shared with you before. That bottom one is an I. I know the font is difficult to see, but we do have an insufficient evidence of skill listed that would be marked in the grade book until the teacher was able to obtain evidence of the skill. And that might be if somebody is absent for a while or ill. Gives us some time to get some evidence in there. So we will continue to have incompletes, like I said. We will still continue to post grades in Skyward Family Access. Progress reports can assist, and we continue to have honor roll, and we continue to have test results. Any questions so far?
What differentiates this between what's been done in the past and what we're all more used to? Basically, you take a test, and if you got 93 above, you got an A or B+, or whatever the grading scale was, and then you didn't necessarily average the test, although some tests were weighted more than others often. But that was how, I assume, we all grew up, right? Am I describing something wrong? Explain to me why this is better than that.
So on a math unit test, let's just use math as an example, you might be testing three different standards on that assessment. So in the traditional assessment, you would get an overall score of a 93, but you don't necessarily know which standard you might need to re-teach on, or you might need to relearn or redo. So some teachers, my eighth-grade math teacher, for example, he has the standards listed on the top of his math test. And if a student gets a 1 or a 2 on a certain part of that test, they only have to retake that certain part of the test because they show proficiency on the other parts of the test. And when they redo that part, they get credit for it. So it's not giving just an overall score, a general kind of ambiguous score of 93. It's really telling you where you are in terms of understanding of the essential standards. Does that make sense?
Yep. When you're looking at these things that are in the packet, is this what you're talking about for the 2021-22 forward testing? So you're saying this was our test, below basic was 31, basic was 40%, proficient was 24%, and then 3.6 was advanced? Okay.
Yep. And so when you add those together, you know, we're looking for who's proficient and advanced as our total number. We would like to have 80% of our students be proficient or advanced at least.
And who is taking, what is this averaging for ELA? So what grade levels are we taking this? Are we taking this fifth through eighth on average? Or are we taking this just for one grade?
No, this is, this is all the schools in the district. So elementary students that took the forward, middle, high.
So everybody from eighth through eighth grade? So we really don't know, per se, sixth through eighth grade and how they do with their forward testing. This is just a plumb? Okay.
I can get you that specific information if you want.
Yeah, we have that, but it's just not in the grade.
Yeah, I mean, I would just, I mean, I think that's like my biggest thing with it is, I mean, thank you, this is a great, you know, outline of this rating. I just am wondering where we are with sixth through eighth grade. Because that's, for me, that was my biggest concern is if we had it up until fifth grade, fine, but then when we hit sixth grade or even seventh grade, getting them ready for high school, that is a threat. That was my, that's one of my biggest concerns because the conversations maybe having at a younger level of being able to coach them and communicate with them where they might not be excelling. But I don't know at the seventh grade level if that is still being communicated effectively, what they can be doing, or even communicating effectively with parents. So I think that's the difference, and that's a wide age difference. You know, you're gonna respond to my four-year-old or kindergarten, or when she gets into kindergarten, a lot different than you're gonna talk to my seventh grader. So.
I would argue that it's even more important to be more specific as the students get older on what they can and cannot do to make sure that they are secure in those essential standards by the time they graduate. You know, high school students take the board exam as well.
Right.
And so they are included in this data. And if you'd like to see high school data, we can get that for you as well. But it's really important for students and parents to know where they are as far as the state expectations.
Right.
And our STAR data too gives us indicators along the way. And what we're seeing is our STAR data and our forward data are very similar. It's our previous classroom data that was not aligned with those other assessments. So we're really trying to dig into what the STAR and the forward are saying, our proficiency for content grade level standards.
Okay. And I, and I completely understand that. I guess my big thing is, is that communication has not happened. So for me, for me to go and approve, you know, with an action like, this all looks fantastic, I just want to make sure that it is fulfilled when we get into the next year. And we are, you know, because again, you know, my daughter, for a kind example, I asked her to go to the teachers and ask what she could do, and they couldn't tell her. So I don't know if they, you know, more training or, or if I needed to do something different, but I had her go to the teachers and say, how can I get a 4? Why am I not getting a 4? And they could not get that to her. So I guess that's like my biggest thing is, it's great if it's really being communicated effectively and really being put out there.
Yep. And I think that that's excellent feedback for us as we move forward into the next year. And I think the report card changes will help a lot with that as well. Because students, students and parents will be able to see where it is that they need to put more work in.
Right.
You mentioned that the target here is to have 80% of all the students in the proficient and above category, right? Of which right now, we're.
We're basing very much.
Less than 70%. Where does that 80% number come from?
Whenever you're talking about universal instruction, so we talk about a Tier One, which is universal, Tier Two, which is that small group, and then Tier Three, which is very intensive intervention. So when you look at the, we call it the EMLSS, so it's Equitable Multi-Level Support Models, we want to make sure that 80% of our students are proficient, and that's telling us that our Tier One or our universal instruction is being effective. Right now, our data is saying that we need to dig deeper. We need to really look more specifically at what the standards are asking us because we're not at that 80%.
What are other schools that, what's a Marshall Act?
What's Marshall Act? I would have to look at their state report card.
Yeah, yes.
I honestly don't.
Some of ours.
I don't know. I can get that information for you, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
So what I'm trying to do is in my own mind, relate this to A, B, C, D, E, F scale. If you had to assign a letter grade to each one of these different categories, advanced, proficient, and basic, could you do that? Or is it not lend itself to that?
Well, an A in a traditional scale is worth four points. So we're still using the same point system. We're just not calling it an A. So we can, if that's what the board decides. But it's, it's the foundational understanding of we're going to be grading or evaluating or sharing and communicating progress on where the students are in relation to the standards, which you can call it whatever you want, but generally, it's a four-point scale.
So where does a 3 fit? If a student consistently got 3s across the board, would they be advanced, proficient, basic, or low-based?
Proficient.
So what you're saying is that we should have 80% of our students getting 3s above. Do I understand it correct?
Correct.
Is there ever been a, are you guys, was that your concept in middle and upper school? About 80% of the kids in your class got 3s above? No.
Four years.
Yeah.
Seventies or?
No, not, I mean, I don't, I don't.
So you completely changed just the concept of what we're doing for grading, what our expectations are. And that's why I asked, well, what are the outcomes in other schools? So in other words, if we're the only school district and all the other similar school districts that has 30% of our students hitting 3s above, and everybody else has 80% of their students hitting 3s above, it doesn't make the question what we're doing wrong. I agree with you, but it doesn't matter whether we're doing this system or not their system.
I think it does because we are making sure that we're not averaging the grades, and we are giving students credit for the learning that they have done. So in a traditional system, if you don't turn in one assignment and you get a zero, that zero will take your overall average. But if you don't turn in a certain assignment and you are able to work with a teacher to show that you understand that skill, you would get credit for it in a standard-based grading system. So we're giving students more opportunity to show their skill instead of, in a traditional system where a teacher grades everything and puts it into the grade book. We are looking to grade and report out on our essential standards. So it is a different system, and it's a different way of looking at grades, but it's a way that will teach the teachers and show the teachers specifically what they need to focus on in their classes and in their small groups and in their individual work.
We're saying that years past, teachers just simply weren't able to do that.
Correct. Because of why?
It does make the question of, correct me if I'm wrong here, compared to the rest of the world, we're not gaining ground, we're losing ground. Right?
Is that, is that a true statement though? Because we're not seeing comparative data.
Right.
We're not seeing any comparative data, so we don't know that to be true.
Does anybody disagree?
We're just guessing if that's true.
And we're seeing composite data. So we're seeing composite data from kindergarten through 12th grade in this graph, correct?
So STAR data is nationally normed. So if you would like me to pull STAR data, we could see where our students are falling in relation to the other students in the nation.
I think that's relevant.
So this data is state normed. So the, this is where we are falling in relation to other students across the state of Wisconsin on the board exam. But if you want national data, I can.
And that's kinda why I asked the question of, well, you came up with an odd number of 80% who can be proficient in this, and it seems like just a number that she could figure out here, or we learned in seminar, or somebody who came up with the system said, I'd really like to see that. It's just an R, R ambiguously specific number.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, you know, we should back out for a second, because philosophically, we want a hundred percent of our kids to be advanced and proficient, right?
There's some more to this, everyone.
But, but, but you're right, you know, in education, the educational world, that eighty percent is a little bit of an ambiguous number, because that is a target that researchers have determined, that if you are implementing all of your programs with fidelity, and you've got highly qualified teachers, and you're doing everything right, that's what you can expect, because there's other variables in there, right? There's, there's special education, there's poverty, you know, whatever you wanna talk about. But that, that eighty percent is kind of the goal that you're shooting for. When it comes to our data versus other data, you know, I, I can't speak specifically to the numbers that Christine shared tonight, cause I just don't have that memorized off the top of my head. And, and there's no denying that we have a ton of work to do around here, but typically over the years, Waterloo has been the highest in achievement scores amongst cohorts of our peers. So we, you know, during the referendum, we looked at our data at the high school, and we were the highest scores in the area. So while we're a long ways from that eighty percent, one can take a little bit of comfort in knowing that we're, we tend to stack up pretty well against our peers. But that still doesn't, you know, make an excuse, because we're, we currently have kids that need to go a long ways yet, and it's our responsibility to get them there. The, the other thing that I think is worth noting is, don't forget that the DPI and legislators are always changing the target on us, right? So, so when, when we look at those standards, those have been set and given to us, and over the years, they have tended migrate more and more downwards, so you're asking more and more from kids. Now, I'm not making excuses, we need to get them there, and we've got work to do, but what we have noticed is we keep expecting more from kids at earlier ages, and therefore our skills, or our numbers on those skills tend to not be the most flattering.
And, and by the way, this is why I'm, I'm a nervous performer about ACT, SAT scores. I, I've said it on many different times, I don't know how many different people that wanna listen, the same people take, unless I'm wrong, they're taking the same test that I took, wow, is it, five marks, right? So we could literally compare my son's scores.
And they change the score a little bit, but yeah.
There's a, a lot of longitudinal data on ACT and SAT, yes.
Right. It is, it is the one, and what I'm trying to do, what I would love for our system to do is provide for parents in the community that same metric, where they can look at what their kids are doing now and say, "Oh, that's in relationship to what I did, here's where that falls in the scale of things." So I would love to see us go to a, a, a letter grade scale, but if there's, if it doesn't fit well into this, I, listen, I, I, I like, it's almost like a continuous improvement model is basically what you're doing, and I take no issue with that. You know, how you sort of evaluate, reevaluate what you're doing wrong, and the little nuances of, "Well, they learned this aspect of it, not that," not necessarily taking the average of grades, but, you know, looking more as, "What did you achieve during this first certain timeframe?" I don't take issue with that, that, that's, that's fine. I don't know that there was a huge problem with what we did before, or it doesn't explain this more globally. Aside from that, I don't have a problem with what you're doing, it's just I think we need to be able to relate this to what's happened in the past for all these parents, because otherwise this becomes impossible to explain to you, unless you're an educator.
Well, it is a system that is used for K four, and it has been for a very long time. So we're expanding, we're expanding.
What I've said to that is, I acknowledge that, no one cares for, okay, they just don't. Were you that interested in that at that time?
No.
What, not overly, right?
No.
But when they got into fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, especially seventh grade.
Well, when she.
Now we're starting to become concerned, because now it matters.
It was sixth grade was when it put from her, and then it was like, I got really good.
So that's why, all of a sudden you made a change, and everybody's getting feedback from people saying, "What the heck? People cared enough? They didn't care for it?"
Well, and I would argue that is exactly why we're doing it, because it does matter more in middle school to make sure that we have our students proficient in the standards that we're expecting them to be proficient in.
One, one.
So, so it is really imperative that we acknowledge all the work that the teachers have done, and, you know, really support this work, because the teachers are really looking at the standards and really analyzing them and saying, "Wow, what we have done before wasn't what our students are needing." We are raising the rigor, we are raising the communication, and that will be explicitly told to teachers that you have got to share out the rubrics, you have got to put it on your syllabi, it's in the course guides, it's on the progress report. And I would urge parents, and you, if you've got questions, please ask the teachers, or ask me, and I will get it to the teachers, because you're absolutely right, communication is key. But that's one of the foundations behind standards-based grading, is to give you more minute communication about how your students are doing specifically in regards to the standards. Instead of an overall ambiguous grade of a B, you don't know where your student is, you know, needing extra help, if it's a geography skill, if it's an algebra skill, if it's adding or subtracting, or whatever it is, it just says math. So we're trying to be far more specific in how we communicate where your students are.
Sarah, I don't remember, did we see a breakdown beyond what the individual class?
I mean, I guess I, I would say at the high school level in Skyward, you can look at your child's report and how they've done on certain things, and if on exam two, Abby got a sixty-nine percent, I could say, "Let's talk about exam two, what was on it, what's missed, where'd it go."
Yeah.
So what you're saying exists in the high school, I mean, I don't know enough about how the middle school is.
So exam two doesn't say specifically this standard they didn't do well on, this standard they did do well on. It's giving you an overall grade.
But the student knows the expectation for that exam, like they were given expectations prior to that exam to be able to speak to it, I mean, that's been my experience with my children.
That's just the, the biggest thing is, right there, is that she said, "They know when you get to high school, what to expect with your A, B, C, D, and what your grade is gonna be if you do get a sixty-nine, your expectation is set."
Yeah, Abby could say to me, "Yeah, I didn't understand this theory in algebra, and that's why that exam went bad." I knew it was gonna be on the exam, I couldn't grasp the concept, and then we had to make another plan. I'm sure she had the opportunity, although a certain point, to retake that test.
Well, I, I think it's important to, to note that we're, we're trying to fix a problem here, right? We, we're not just changing our grading system for the sake of changing it, or, you know, administrators know better than boards, or whatever you wanna say, we're trying to fix a problem here. And the problem we have not seen to this degree at the high school is the difference between the amount of kids that are getting As and Bs and are showing up at the honor roll versus that percentage of advanced and proficient, which we talked about the correlation a little bit, you know, those threes and fours equaling As and Bs. And at the intermediate and middle school, we're seeing large numbers of kids on the A and B honor roll. But we just look at the data.
Composite data would have been beneficial.
Yes.
So that, you know, that, that's just basic grading question. To me, that, that was a problem, I remember having the problem with that when I was a kid. You know, so then we've always had that issue, and so there's gotta be some kind of a metric in line where basically the teachers are prevented from doing that in the long run. And I leave that.
Isn't that the standard-based testing?
You, you know, I agree, and so I, to a certain extent, I'm happy to defer to you guys on, on that. That's like managing people, okay? I don't wanna get involved in the management of people. But my only concern is, I think is similar to Sarah's, I want some way, some way where people can understand what's happening. And, and part of what we were just discussing in the background here is, she looked on Skyward, I didn't at all. I didn't even know there was additional information on Skyward, okay? The paperwork comes to our home for the three kids, my wife looks at it, she hands it to me, and I cruise through it, and I see whether or not they're doing okay, and then I, I'm done with it. So for me, as a dad, wasn't overly interested until now, it would've been really nice to have all that on the report card. If, if that's really our goal, to tell parents, here's, not only, like, yes, you got a B in math class, but frankly, you basically got a D in the geometry portion of it, but the algebra portion of it, you're, you're really, really good. That would tell me so much, it would be nice to have it in that one document that I have.
Yes.
And I'm not saying we need that tomorrow, but maybe over time, that is something that we could do. And, and again, I would love to see it in letter grade form too, to me, it would make a difference.
So if we, if we were able to go back to the report card in the Skyward slide, the important part here too is that it also tells the teacher where the class is in relation to a standard. So when we set up our gradebook under that ELA five point, R point one, they can look at the assignments and say, "Okay, the majority of my class is, is here." Like, in this example, the majority of the class is proficient in R one for fifth grade ELA. So then I would know that I only have to intervene with anybody that was a two. And in this example, there's not anybody that's at a two right now. So I can move on, or I can, I can, you know, embed that standard into further lessons along the line. But if I look at the next standard, ELA five point R two, you know, I see one student, the second student down, that has a two in that final standard right now, so I need to intervene with that student right away, to make sure that I clean up or clear up any misconceptions they have with that one standard. Instead of looking at an overall grade book that has eighty-five, forty-six, whatever, all the percentages down the line, as a teacher, that doesn't tell me specifically where I need to intervene.
You a hundred percent saw me on that aspect of this. If I was a teacher, I would want this. Cause not only, the other thing that it could tell you this kinda need is, it, it might be tempting for them to focus on getting the really smart kids proficient, and then leaving this vast bulk in the middle on these three issues, when that stuff's important to those vast bulk of kids.
That student in the top row that's getting fours along the way shouldn't be having extensions or, you know, other activities that have them apply the standard in a more advanced way or in a deeper way. So as a teacher, this is really about student learning. As parents and community, it's about communicating that specific student learning instead of an arbitrary single letter grade. And I know this is hard to understand, you have to understand, I've been doing this, this is my twenty-ninth year of education, and prior to that, I had four and a half years of school, so I'm going into my third decade of this work. So in order to explain it, and I don't even know how long I've been talking, for fifteen, twenty minutes, is difficult, which is why it's crucial for people to ask questions, because I don't know what you don't know, and what you don't understand.
I, I almost think, if I were to try to explain this to somebody else now, I'm gonna probably have to explain this to my wife or someone else. And I wouldn't go into anywhere near this level of granular detail, other than to say, it's broken down in such a way for the actual administrators, and for the teachers, and for the people that are actually doing the work to teaching kids, where it's much easier for them to understand, and gives them much, it's interesting, it's a granular level, but it's also broad. And it's, it's quick and easy to get the data from it, I, I think it's, I think it's fantastic. But I don't know it's that important for parents to know that aspect of it, I just think they need something that's relatable.
Well, and that's the biggest thing, how do we go back and get parents on board? Because that's the biggest thing, we've gotten emails, and I know that parents are upset about this, and they don't understand, and that's the biggest thing, they don't understand. So how can we back up and explain to them, not just by them emailing, it, it like, some type of communication has to go out that shows this, or that's more effective? Cause it, I mean, it just, it didn't happen in the beginning. And so how can we back up?
So what kind of communication are you looking for?
I, I, I don't know, I mean, anything to explain it better, because the one sheet that we got in the mail, when it happened, was, I didn't understand it when I read it, I was like, "What is this?" And then, and then it started trickling that I had to have Bella ask more questions, and ask why she was getting this grade instead of a four, and then they said she couldn't get a four, and so it was like back and forth with a lot of teachers, and a lot of frustration from her. And so I know that other parents are having the same type of frustration, so I, I don't know how effectively it can go back out, but it, it should happen before school starts. So then, Brian, you don't get emails, Christine, you don't get emails, I don't know.
I would welcome emails.
I don't know how.
I would welcome parents to come in, because I think that it's far easier to, I had several parents come in during second semester, and we had individual parent meetings. We did have a parent night, we had, nobody attend. So I would welcome people to come in and ask questions, and I will go through it and explain it to them. I think it's far easier to have conversations than to try to explain something like this through emails.
And I, yeah, and, and I'm not saying email for sure, I, I don't think email would be good either. I'm saying I don't know how, but.
I, would, would maybe, part of this too is my fault, that I didn't understand this, because I know, I, I would love to actually see the original communications that went out last year.
I would share them with you.
Yeah, I would love to see those because.
No, I did share them.
Oh, you did share?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I apologize, I have to cruise through my email, but my wife said that she actually, she ran across it and like printed it out and put it on my computer or something, and I don't know what happened to it, if I just ignored it or whatever, so that, that's on me. But for me, it would be really helpful to see a really specific example, almost like a template kid in a template class, you know, John Doe, here's the results, here's what we did, here's how we graded it. These were, you know, basically the types of tests that they took, and here's what their grades were, and here was the result. If I could see something like that, it would, it would be much easier for me to put two and two together when I then broke it down to my kids, but I, so I could also see on the report card the things that I'm missing. So if I was, if I was shown an example of, well, here's what's happening all in the background, but I only saw this grade from my kid, and the benefit of this system is that I'm supposed to see this broader breakdown, and I don't see it, it makes me know that I need to ask for that.
Right, and that's what will happen when we have the new gradebook system this fall. So you'll be able to see in Skyward Family Access, the grades related to the standards are gonna be identified by the standards, so you'll be able to see something very similar to this for your students.
But that's only gonna be in Skyward, that's not gonna come to the.
It'll be on the progress report as well.
It will be, okay.
Yes.
That'll help a lot. But that was, was that the case last year?
No.
It wasn't, I, I think just that alone.
The reason that we could not switch it over is because if we switched over in Skyward, which is our informational system, all the data from first semester would've been lost. So we could not switch over, but we did want the teachers and the students to get their feet wet in this process last year, and I, I'll totally admit, because Skyward was not, you know, playing well with us in this type of system, it was confusing for parents. But that will be resolved this fall, we will have the new Skyward gradebook like this, and a new report card that breaks it down into the different standards. Like I said before, the syllabi, the class syllabi that comes home, the course guides, all of that information will have the, the standards in it, and if you would like, I can put a descriptor on the website, but like I said, I do think that it's important for people if they have questions to ask the questions, because like Sarah said, it's, it's hard to read through something if you don't understand it.
Christine, can I jump in?
Sure.
A second.
I guess I'm not gonna give you permission, but I'm kidding.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's Michelle.
Michelle.
I wanted to, I wanted to add from, um, thank you, um, I wanted to just add from the perspective of two different districts that I've also worked at, that has gone through this process, and then also experiencing it from a parent perspective, and I was fortunate enough that I had an administrator that oversaw my, my own children's report cards, so I stayed in the process from, from both ends and at different districts, and what you're bringing up is, um, you know, those are excellent points. I also just wanted, you know, what's, what's coming through in Christine's presentation just blew my socks off. I would take that on the road, it was just, it encapsulated everything. But I just wanna reiterate, you know, on the timeline that Christine shared, this is a multi-year process. And I think once people and parents see the rubric itself, when, when Sarah, you're wondering, "How do, how do, how do we get an A?", that rubric has those specific skill descriptors, so that you can see, this is, this is what we expect from every sixth, seventh, eighth, you know, ninth grader, or whatever grade, and if you are demonstrating an advanced set of skills, this is how that looks. And so those descriptors become very concrete. Whereas, you know, before, you get a B, and then you just, you know, study harder, do more, you know, what, what, extra credit. I mean, that's how I grew up, if, if you didn't have the grade you wanted, you did. If you didn't have the grade you wanted, you did extra things or you were more playing the game of school or jumping through hoops. And here, this really, I'm just reiterating it, really pinned down the specific skills that we need our students to, to have and to be able to do. I mean, it holds them accountable. Again, I've taught for twenty-three years and it held me accountable when I utilized standards and rubrics because it became very crystal clear what I needed to do to push each of my students to the next level. So I just wanted to share that. And I apologize if we're spending a lot of time on it, but I just, I wanted to share that. And the other piece that I think we could look into bringing to the table is, you know, when I've gone to different conferences over the last five years, I'm hearing colleges say that students are coming to them with lacking skills, they're, they're not persevering or less students are persevering through the rigor of, of the college courses. And so I think some of that maybe could be brought to the table too for the public to understand, you know, what are we seeing after students graduate? How many are successfully making it, you know, through? So I just think that might be another piece that we could look into bringing to the table. Thanks for letting me jump in.
Yes, thanks, Michelle. So we've had some good discussions. Is there anything else you would like Mrs. Zeman to answer or present? Because when we move to taking action, we'll, I guess we'll just talk among the board members and we'll, and we'll come to the decision.
Thank you for the presentation, by the way. Very helpful.
All right, thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Christine.
All right, we're going to move into board reports. Policy committee meeting. Policy committee members, feel free to give a brief synopsis. We heard from Scott. He was not at our meeting, but we went through the policies for the first reading tonight, the ninety thousands. Again, more boilerplate type policies. There are some new policies in here that we currently don't have. But I don't think there's anything, in my opinion, outside of the rigmarole policies that draws your eye. But we had good discussion and the policy committee approved our approval. So anything to add, committee members?
No, they all made sense. We met, we reviewed them, we had several discussions. Nothing to, no red flags.
Can I just add, what's the communication to the rest of the board when the policy is going to be in the upper section? Just so that people are aware when we're covering those more new year policies, who might want to be involved in that discussion? These first two sections have been pretty simple and straightforward policies, but we're going to get into some of the policies around grading and student behavior and things like that. And it'd be nice if we could have those discussed at policy meetings. So I don't know what the communication is to the rest of the board about what policies we're covering?
Yeah, whatever you guys want. I know Beth sends out the agenda, but that's not always listed specifically on the agenda. So yeah, whatever you guys want, just let us know.
Okay, yeah, I think it'll be relevant for future meetings.
Well, most certainly. Because we're not going to want to have the debate sitting in a board meeting for, for, for ironed out. That's why we have to make that coming. So as we move forward, we will certainly, all board members are welcome and encouraged to attend the policy meetings. By all means, any, any committee, any board member is welcome to vote. Anything else? All right, moving on. We'll get to approval of bills and vouchers. Are there any questions that have not been answered in regards to the treasurer's report to superintendent's listing of disbursements through July thirty-first or the district receipts for July?
I did review them. I found no, I don't think there's any need for further discussion, so I'll move for approval.
All three?
Yes.
Coming to the second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Craig, seconded by Ms. Cummings, to approve in one fell swoop the treasurer's report to superintendent's listing of disbursements through July thirty-first and the district receipts for the month of July. It's a roll call vote.
Craig, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Schneider, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Seth, yes.
Here is the yes.
Marty, yes.
All right, motion carries on a seven oh one. Brings us over to legislative updates. Is there any legislative updates to share, Mr. Henning or board members?
Well, I just seen that the school board now can drive a bus. So that.
Right, and I'd all you up, so.
There's an update for you, Charlie. Now you can drive a bus.
Get some spare time?
In my spare time, is hop on the bus. I'm only four times a half, can I still really do that? Can I still ride a bus when I'm only four times a half?
Right.
For that.
Sure, they got pillows you can sit on.
All right, all right. I've always wanted to do it at least once in my life.
Or number allowed to, no, you do it once.
Just one time, that's it. I just, I just want to try it.
Well, you gotta get like something, you gotta pursue some sort of training.
Okay, I can't just drive one?
You have to pass the test. As far as we have a meeting scheduled, I believe a special meeting or this post, I don't know if it's scheduled in finality regarding the budget. So, because we still get information down from the state through the budget that will be come available. Any announcements this evening? I have none either. Brings us to public input. Is there anyone who wishes to give public input this evening? All right, here are none. We're going to roll right into new business. So fresh off the tongue, if you will, action item A, standards-based grading. There was some weird discussion here. Is there any further discussion amongst board members? We have a recommendation in front of us that the board reaffirm the decision to support the work being done with standards-based grading in grades five through eight, as we did approve that last year. So it'll be a reaffirmation, if you will. We had a good presentation, good discussion. Board members want to elaborate, discussion before vote. Now's the time. Or we can poll board, I can poll the board. We can go down one by one and just give your input, if you will, where you stand. Or we can do a roll call vote and, and take it right to a emotion or actionable item. Are you guys who'd like to proceed?
Well, I'll start with a comment. I have an aunt with a doctor degree. She was up for the presidency at one time of marrying college. And a lot of the work went right back to, they didn't call it necessarily standards-based grading, but it's really how the kids learn it. And she and I would write for a couple hours when we'd go down and visit my parents. And as I heard the presentation, it brought back a lot of her comments to me forty years later, so I'm all in favor of this.
Okay. Sue, would you like to comment?
I think my only concern about it, and I certainly wouldn't advocate presenting it to the broader population this way, is that the mo, one of the motivations behind it was that we're teaching to a test, could be perceived by it, right? Like we're saying our composite scores on our forward exam are the standards. Are the, are the standards, but that's one test that students take where they get a mark. And it's a composite exam where they don't get to retake or be re-taught. It's a one-day test, sit down and take it. And we're changing the way we teach to accommodate that task.
Okay, Sarah? Any comments, or?
I said a lot. Yeah, I, I thought the presentation was great. I just am a little hesitant on the fifth through eighth grade to implementing it. I, I think K through fourth, even K through fifth is fine. I just, I don't, I don't know if it's, you know, yeah. I don't, I don't know if it's going to benefit the kids that really are doing good and the kids that are struggling. I don't, so, and I just, I'm, I'm right in the middle. And like I said, the communication is really important to get it out there. And I don't know how that's going to happen.
Jim?
From what I've seen and what I've heard, I'm all for standard-based grading.
Jay?
I'm kind of with Sarah with that. I mean, one through five, you know, or grades of one through five is fine. I mean, are we preparing our middle school kids for high school with, you know, ones through fourth grades? Yeah, I don't know on the possibility, but. She had a good presentation, she didn't answer a lot of his questions.
I'm pretty much for it now, with the caveat that I would change to a letter grade system. I would just bring it to something that's familiar to more people, that's all.
Sure. My thoughts on it are, yeah, a lot of the discussion, they sat back and listened and didn't really participate, but a lot of the discussion was about the label. And I guess I would rather have our students labeled. What I would portray, my opinion is accurately versus inflated like that. So we feel good about it. So I, I'm, I'm in favor of it because I'd like to raise the standards. I think we've got to push to get everything we can to prepare kids. And when I say that, I get it, change is hard. Because yes, we can relate back to our personal experiences and it's been ingrained in our brain forever about the letter grade. But if we live in the past, I guess we won't move into the future. So, well, that's right. So I think everybody's had a chance to speak and we just got to take this to a vote. And we might as well just go to a roll call vote. If someone wants to put the motion on the floor, also move to approve the standards-based grading.
Well, it's not approve, it's reaffirm. We've already through, like, we would be making a change if we didn't.
We could take a motion to reaffirm.
I don't know if we have to.
I don't know if we have to either, matching it to the system.
We have an actionable item. If we decide not to take action, we will be reaffirming. So if we're not going to change anything, we don't need a motion.
I don't feel a need to take action.
No, I don't either.
Okay. All right, board. We will not take action. The, the action's already approved by the board. Will not be altered and will move forward as presented in our current system.
So some, just, just to be clear, so that everybody is straight on, on what we're doing here. If somebody wanted then to make a motion to return to traditional-based grading, you could also do that right now.
Sure. Is there anyone who would like to present that motion? All right, we're moving on. Action item B, weighted grading. So included in our packet, some commentary in regards to the AP courses. Again, this is, I think, our third time through this. It's recommended that we're not to change to a weighted grading system.
So again, is this needed to be voted on?
Well, we should, we wanted to bring it back in front of the full board. So if there's discussion, it's recommended that we do not move to a weighted grading system. Is there any discussion regards to weighted grading system, system, excuse me? And does someone want to bring a motion to the floor regarding the weighted grading? Or did they ask, is there any additional discussion regards to the weighted grading?
Yeah, I would say from an administrative standpoint, we continue to work with those committees that hand out scholarships based on class rank to address this concern. So I believe by the time we get to spring, we will have alleviated those concerns. So I just wanted to put that out there. It, it's not done yet. And should that not happen, you know, we certainly can revisit this. But I, I know that was one of the concerns. And so that work is being done, it's just not there yet.
And what committees are those, Brian?
Our scholarship committees.
She wasn't here the last night.
I was not at the July meeting, so.
Yeah, you weren't.
Yeah, any, any scholarship committee that, most, most notably the Carle Jumper Scholarship Committee, but other scholarship committees as well.
Is there any other questions for clarification in regards to the weighted grading system? Or the handout, I did not see the handout, I apologize. I'll look through the three on the page and then find it. Anybody?
Well, I'll move to, to not recommend the weighted grading system. Keep our grading the way it is.
I'll second that. Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Seth, seconded by Mr. Craig. But again, this would be similar to the actionable item A. We're not going to make any action. If someone wanted to propose something different than a weighted grading system that's here, if we wanted to approve a weighted system, we could probably take it to a vote. But if we're not going to take action, we're not going to change what we're currently doing. We can just let this ride and keep going. In case there was a change, that's how we gotta, that's how we have to lay it out there.
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we could take the, we could take the vote. But essentially, the vote is not to change anything. So it's been on the floor approved, so we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion will carry on a five-two vote. And again, the motion was to not change how we are currently grading in high school in regards to a weighted grading system. Okay? Action item C, staff handbooks. Again, any reformer, there are some changes called out and I'm sure Mr. Henning can speak on them. But the main changes here, and I believe they are paralleled across the support staff handbook and the certified teaching handbook, speaks to utilization of time off and how that affects staff members.
Yeah, what does that mean, time off? Like, are we talking mental health? Are we talking, let's say some, like, someone has a kid that has cancer and has to take off for medical issues, obviously? Or someone goes on maternity leave? Like, are all these wrapped under this? And how are you, are you going to take it case by case? How is this determined?
Yep, so, so staff members are allocated sick days and personal days. So we certainly would encourage employees to, you know, utilize their sick days and personal days for whatever needs they might be encountering with their family or themselves. So that's not what any of this is about. It's only once a staff member has exhausted all of their paid leave, for lack of a better term, exhausted their pay leave, that they start to encounter unpaid leave, that this would kick in. And that would not be the case for a family medical leave. So if someone did need to take additional time after they've run out of their sick leave or, you know, a severe case or illness or something in their family, they could submit the paperwork for approved FMLA and then state law and federal law governs how FMLA works. This would simply be for somebody outside of personal day leave, sick day leave or FMLA leave, then this would encounter them. And I, you know, this, this is probably, I think the board and administration have a pretty, pretty good record for a number of years now of passing employee-friendly practices and working on that handbook to make this a, a nice place to work and to show appreciation for our employees. This is probably the first, what I would call, management-heavy change that we've made in a while. And like anything, we're doing this because we're seeing a problem, right? Ever since COVID, we've saw a drastic uptick in staff members needing unpaid days off. Now, this will probably not. Now, this will probably not affect 95% of your staff, but there, it will affect a percentage of your staff that, over the past few years, have, for whatever reason or not, and I'm not questioning, you know, people's, people's things that they have going on in their life, but the district has to provide services for kids, we operate on taxpayer funding, it affects the building when people are gone, we need to have people here if they need to be gone, use your paid leave, once you go past your paid leave, we're still going to approve those days, it's just that, how do we distinguish those employees from ones that are here every day working? So, this is really less about being punitive to people that are, are gone, and more about recognizing the people that are here and working, so, anyone that encounters those unpaid days, they've exhausted their leave, will now have new criteria, they will not be eligible for compensation increases the following year, they will owe for the appropriated portion of their benefits, the district paid out between $50,000 and $75,000 last year of benefits to staff members that were not working, and so I, I just think that that's gotten excessive, and there has to be a correction.
So does this, sorry, if I, I just want to make sure I'm asking, so this does not mean someone that's pregnant, or they would qualify for FMLA? They would qualify for FMLA, and then they wouldn't have to pay for compensation, I'm just thinking, like, because we have a lot of young teachers, and I was like, ooh, if that fell in that category, we would be losing a lot of.
Well, it, it could, it could, for somebody that's pregnant, because remember, you don't qualify for FMLA until you've worked for a district for a year.
Right.
So somebody that needed to be off for the birth of a child in their first year of employment in the district would not qualify for FMLA, so they may be asking for six to 12 weeks off, that would not qualify for FMLA, they only get eight sick days and two personal days, and then we are allowing them one unpaid day, so they get 11 days, so once they went past the 11 days, we more than likely would approve it, we've done it before.
They would have to pay.
But then they would not be eligible for compensation increases the following year, and they would have to pay for their benefits.
Does the district have a policy for, like, an intermittent FMLA? Somebody has a medical condition that requires them to be out intermittently, do we have a policy about that?
Well, again, state law and federal law, you know, kind of govern those things, we're required to provide intermittent leave because we're a nine-month employer, so somebody can, you know, take six weeks in May and then come back and take six weeks in September, we don't necessarily allow intermittent, just to say, like, for the birth of a child, I'm gonna take off every Wednesday for the whole year, so we don't allow it in those specific cases, but where the doctors' orders specify intermittent being needed, that we would approve.
Just, just pick on this because you just said it, but so, this, is this, you have X days off, so it's 11, is that correct, total?
Eight, eight sick days and two personal days, 10 days total, but we're allowing one unpaid day. And so, so, yeah, you'd, you'd get essentially 11 days before you would encounter the penalties, per se.
So if you're, is it as specific in the policy, if I have eight sick days, 11 total, but I have nine, I'm calling sick nine times, does that affect me, because I'm still under my total days, but I'm technically over my eight days?
No, because you can use personal days for sick.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you think this is gonna hinder people that come in that are young, that, you know, want to start a family, do you think that they're not gonna choose Waterloo because of this, I, I'm just thinking, like, young women that come in to be a teacher, and they get pregnant within the first month of starting, that would be.
That's not just Waterloo, the first year, is it? No.
Yeah, FMLA rules are stated nationwide.
So if they want to marshal this thing?
But they wouldn't have to pay for their insurance?
No, no, yeah, no, I'm saying they're not.
That's not true either, I, I know Marshall does the same thing.
That's a lot of money.
Well.
Especially for a new mom.
The thing is, I talked to a couple people, and they were surprised, we did not have a policy like that in our, in our manual, because they all have it. I know, we've, yeah, people that don't show up, you tell them, don't bother, we got livestock to take care of every day, here we got students to take care of, and, you know, it's, it's become, we know it's, it's taken a big tick upward in the last few years, I think this is good, it shows support for our staff that's here.
Well, it's like 11 days off, but you still get Christmas vacation, they still get spring break, you get all those, so it's more than really 11 days like the next one.
That's 11.
Yeah, I mean, I think our staff deserves to be commended, because we've, we've made it this long without needing this rule, right? Our, our staff really has good attendance, but in the last year or two, and I don't know what the reason is, some people say post-COVID, we've just seen a major, major uptick in the use of those leave days, and again, we're not talking about approved or sanctioned contract leave, we're talking about going beyond those days, is seeming to become a problem, and I think, you know, as management, you, you have to put some sort of measure in place to protect the kids, be fiscally responsible for taxpayers' number or, or money, and, and also make sure we have people here to teach, teach kids.
Any further discussion?
Were there other significant changes to the handbook?
None, no, no, and, and I'll be honest, I think this is, this is something we need, so I'm advocating for it, but, you know, this is something you have the option for, if you, if you decide as an employer that you're, you're okay with that, I, I don't think you'd be completely out of line either, so.
Just one other note on the books, they, just a misleading notation, they say August 2020 on the bottom, but then we've got effective dates in that, just curious, first, page one, at the bottom right, says August 2020, but that date doesn't coincide.
Yeah, we have a couple dates to fix on there, I noticed.
I would move for approval of the proposed change.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Crave, seconded by Mr. Sets, to approve with the changes that are listed out and discussed, is there any further discussion before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a seven oh, opposed. Takes us to action item D, we have a Start College Now application, student by the name of Fugan Lowersdorff has requested spring semester college 101 for two credits and computer lit for one credit, that's noted in your packet, we've already approved, two other students to attend courses during the spring semester, and it's recommended that the Start College Now course application be approved as presented, is there any discussion regarding that? Start College Now application.
Do you take those courses here or do you go outside?
Typically outside.
I would move to approve the Start College Now application.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion by Ms. Quamie, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to approve as presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Takes us to action item E, staff positions, as noted, as we approve the agenda, we are adding a Mariah York, second grade teacher, Quinn Killer Lane for IT, but we are removing Rebecca Walter, correct, Mr. Henning?
Correct.
So the other positions are listed here, two resignations, we have noted the copies of the resignation letter in the packet, and the rest are new employees. What's that? Any discussion?
Also move for approval.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Crave, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to approve as presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries on a seven oh, opposed. Takes us to action item F, teacher leadership positions, the positions are listed out, looks like we're still searching for three leaders to fill open positions, was recommended that we approve as presented, as you can see, it's listed out their position and the compensation for said position, any discussion in regards to the teacher leadership positions as presented?
I don't have it in front of me, but when I looked at it, it looked like my interns were listed in there twice for ACT prep, and I don't know if there are two ACTs, or is that?
No. Oh, you're right, that's, that's I fault, it's only one.
Yeah, well, she was only getting paid once, but she was listed twice, so.
She does a lot of work for those kids.
She does. Any other questions, discussion?
I'd move to approve the teacher leadership positions, as presented, second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Ms. Quamie, seconded by Ms. Cummings, to approve as presented with the noted scratch of the duplication, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those?
I'll abstain on the key sets.
Okay, so motion will carry on a six oh one vote. Brings us to action item G, 2023, 2024, all athletic co-curricular positions, listed out here is all the positions, they're recommended for approval, any questions? It's like we got 10 football coaches, four volleyball coaches, two cross-country coaches, and two middle school volleyball, and the athletic director positions.
Some of those are volunteer positions.
Yes. Looks like we have five volunteer football coaches and one volunteer volleyball position.
I'll make a motion to approve the all athletic co-curricular positions.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Yurgis.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Ms. Quamie, before we go to a vote, one question, middle school volleyball, we still got an opening, assuming we'll, we should find someone to fill that?